Say it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can. Okay, it's. About a minute. Thanks. Okay, folks, we'll call the meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday night, June the 10th, 2025. This is a regular monthly meeting of the Maritelpore Council. We welcome everybody in the chambers and who are watching us on YouTube live. So with that in mind, we'll rise for the flag ceremony and Reverend Morris will offer the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hail the Father, we thank you again today for your faithfulness and your blessings. We ask your hand and your guidance and direction upon this meeting this evening at the burrow. We just ask God to bless each one that is here and bless the leaders, Lord of our town. Keep your hand upon him Christ, wonderful being.
Amen. Thank you Reverend. I had received a text from Mayor Shane. He's been called out on some kind of a situation with the gas company. So there's a good chance he won't be here this evening. And with that, Patty, the roll call, please.
Mr. Ackerman.
Here.
Mr. Reer.
Here.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mrs. Nagy.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mrs. Conrery is absent. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Solicitor Valentine is by phone. Mayor Smith is absent. Billy Baker's absent. No police and Brian Wright.
Here. Mark, are you picking all this up?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, the minutes, we had one meeting last month. It was May 19th. It was rescheduled from our regular meeting because of the flooding in the community. Are there any additions or corrections discussion on those minutes? And if not, I'd ask for a motion to approve them.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Roland, and a second. Thank you, Clarence. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Now we go to the finances and monthly bills. Terry.
All right. In the general fund tonight, we have a balance of $203,755.93. And we have bills that need approved for $962.03. I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ron. All those in favor of paying the bills say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Also, under finance, we had, I think the storm took out our fire alarm system down in the basement. I think Patty has some information she would like to share with us.
Yes, the, on that thunderstorm we had the other day, on the sixth, I guess it was, it took out the fire alarm system. And the cost estimate is $5,680.21. I turned it into the insurance company. The adjuster got in contact with us. And they have to do some research and things because they track the weather and everything to find out if there actually was a storm in our area at that time. And he said it will take a couple of weeks, but he'll get back with us as to whether they'll pay any of this or not.
Or are we going to just go ahead and order a new system?
No, he said leave it, leave everything as it is. Don't, don't touch it. Don't get rid of anything until after they do their investigation. And if they say they won't cover it, then the borough will have to figure out what they're going to do.
Maybe we could put that under our, on our agenda, under unfinished business for July? Is that okay?
Yeah. That's all I have.
I have one question. I was just curious. I'm sure it's fine. Somerset area, in the last week, paid $79. I'm just curious about that.
Yeah. New Berkeley did CPR class or something.
Okay.
And he did it from down.
Okay.
And the other thing I'll bring up, I noticed this under the finances. We do have $112,000, almost $100 in our fuel funds account. Are we planning to do any paving at all this year? I thought if we don't use it, we'll lose it or we won't get.
Oh, no. It stays there. You can, you can do projects and wait for a couple of years.
But what, did we decide anything on any projects?
What did we want to do on Ridge Avenue? We want to do a couple of small streets and, you know, that guy, I think he's the one for guests tonight. Did we want to do any milling out there if they was in town? Or is that the gas companies?
Yeah, I, I don't see him here.
I mean, I think Brian does have a few small streets picked out.
There are a few online. NPL is working and they, I can't remember his name. He's coming in, I think next month. And I was kind of holding off to wait because they're going to do some paving also to the streets that they messed up. So I was kind of waiting to see what they were going to pave as competitive as we need.
Well, they're all up on the hill.
Yeah, they're all up on the hill. The ones we were talking, they're out that side of town pretty well, aren't they?
Brian, what do we do like before? Once we get ready to get touched with, we won't drive around. See the streets, we paint, write everything down.
I know he has a few that he had mentioned. I mean, it's up to you guys, but I, the street committee, but I, I just think we should do.
We want to do it as quickly as possible. Like you don't want to wait till October.
No.
Maybe.
The alley between the barber shop and the foxes, that's terrible. I mean, that gets a lot of foot traffic through the summer.
Where's that at?
The alley between, across from Thomas's drugstore. Between fox, between back alleys and the old barber shop.
Yeah, under way.
Okay, so the street committee will get together and maybe make some recommendations at the July meeting. Is that too late?
No.
Okay. That's all I have as far as finances or bills. Anybody have any else to comment on? Okay, not hearing any, then we will move to guests. We asked Kevin Yoder to come here. Between Kevin and Terry, we're going to make a little presentation about possibly, possibly changing the scope of the grant that we applied for the $225,000. So Terry, why don't you take it away? Kevin, we'll hear what you have to say about this, that everybody can understand what's going on here.
About a week or so after the flood, Brian and myself went on a tour of the flood control with his name Jonathan Conville from DEP. And he was up at the holding pond at the upper end. And he said that's, I mean, it was accumulating a lot of debris, but with the storm, it collected a lot more. And he said we should get that dredged out sooner rather than later. So he said we possibly could transfer the fund, this DCED grant, to help clean that out. So he wrote a letter of recommendation for, for us, you know, to submit that request. So that's why we rolled this up tonight, see what council wants to do.
Kevin, you want to give your engineering perspective on this?
Yeah, so the original intent of the grant was down below the railroad bridge, at the lower end of the, the lower end of the flood control, was to, A, repair any loose, loose riprap on, on the flood control itself, and then extend the riprap as far as, as far as we could go with, with the money we got. The idea behind that was that, you know, as, as floodwaters get worse and worse and worse, the, the wave action, the velocity of the stream itself starts eating away at the flood control and riprap really prevents erosion. So we don't have any major issues out there at this point, other than maybe a couple of areas of riprap that could, that could use a little work. But, you know, getting the, getting the grant, you know, was kind of preemptive into any future potential problems, kind of staining off, you know, and any further problems. Then we had the flood event, you know, that kind of showed us that maybe we shouldn't use the money down there. We ought to go up to the debris basin and clean it up. So the last time we did clean the basin was in September of 2019. So just to give you an idea, in 2019, the total construction cost to remove that, to remove the debris, you know, clean out the basin, was a little over $184,000. And we removed 10,600 cubic yards of, of material. So taking a look at the mapping that we had from back then to about same amount of yard shortage now is, is what we removed. And what we did then is we cleaned, we to get an island that, that accumulates right above the weir wall, with the exception of the, you have very much the same situation. You know, you have a lot of debris on one side. If you're looking up from, from Market Street, it flows mainly on the left side of the basin. Debris on the right side, and then you have an island right above the weir wall. So it'd be almost the same situation as we had in 2019. So even with a 50% increase of, of the cost to clean it out as good as we did back in 2019.
Thank you, Kevin, and we can continue this discussion. I had reached out to Senator Stefano and, of course, he, going back to that year, he's well aware of our flood control issues and the concerns. We had to get a wing wall repaired and then, like you said, and he said it would, he would support whatever council decides. It's a simple proceeding. He feels that all we have to do, and I have the addresses and everything, assuming council wants to go forward with this, we come up with a letter, plus Mr. Conwell's too, and just notify Senator Stefano and he would be able to, it's a change of scope, I think we call it. Change of scope where we, and he said they really, as long as we're spending taxpayer money or tax, the, the public is getting, you know, out of this good, makes the community safer. I guess I'm trying to say, they're fine with it. It's not so much exactly what we're going. So I, I think based on what we went through in the past, and I wasn't aware until Brian and I went up there the day, maybe it was the same day we went up, that, I mean, there's all these little saplings there. These little trees are growing up, and that's something that we didn't have before. And they're concerned that if we don't do something, this would turn into a wetland. And then, we can't touch it. I don't know if that's true or not. Is that, or is that not true?
He's, he's wrong because we do have, we do have the right to maintain that, the, the debris basin, because that is part of the flood control. And that's included in the maintenance agreement and the easement that we have to do the work. Now, with that being said, we still have to go through the permitting, through the court like we did, you know, in 19 and 18, which ended up being a headache to get through. But, so whether it grows into a wetland or not, that's still our responsibility to maintain. And if you, if you, if you were up there shortly after the flood event, you can see that the debris basin really does its job. You know, it holds the debris so it doesn't come down through, you know, the concrete section and take chips out of the concrete, you know, really, it's really vital to maintaining the, the protection that the flood control provides.
So I guess to move this along a little bit, what I would like to do here at first is just open up a discussion here with council members, if anyone has any comments on this, and see where that goes. And then possibly asking for a motion. I think tonight we would want to make a motion that we have the intention of moving forward to try to get the grant changed. But the, at this point, the riprap repair isn't as serious or as urgent as what cleaning out this upper basin is. So I think that's where I'd like to see us go. But let's have some discussion. Clarence, do you have any comments?
I'm thinking that pretty well we're going to get it's going to take a while for that clean out up there.
That would be my guess because there's a lot of work to clean it out. You have, you have to do it in stages. You have to dig up a flow channel on one side, clean out the other half, divert the flow, and then finish out the other half. It's just, it, it's an involved process. It's going to take probably most of the money to do that.
Well, I thought try and get the green switched and the debris base.
Yeah, I would think that's where you'd want to start.
Yeah.
At the end. At the beginning.
Absolutely. Karen?
I'm glad we applied for the grant and I appreciate Kevin working with me on that. I did want to reinforce the commissioner's bridge crew has one other bridge to clean up before they do the debris cleanup at the North Street Bridge. But I confirmed today, as soon as the water goes down, they'll take care of that. So we don't have to pay to have that done. So that'll save us a chunk of money.
But you're okay with switching the funds?
Sure.
Yeah.
I talked to him today. Yep.
Could we then have a motion to do that?
I will say this, he did say, the DEP guy said we should reach out to the Corps of Engineers and make sure that they're going to go up as far as where, where the deed, where Karen's grant was going to end, where they went up to meet that. So we're not hit with any unexpected expenses.
And that would be part of the motion that we, the intent is there, but we, that's part of the research, the due diligence to move forward on this. And maybe either you or I could contact, you have a, Patrick from the Army Corps of Engineer, I have an acquaintance with him. Maybe we could discuss all and see where we are.
The number I got, the guys in North Carolina for the flooding they had down there.
What's his name?
Brown, Tom Brown.
Okay, well, this was a Patrick, somebody. Anyways, okay, well said, Terry. Could we have a motion then that we explore moving forward to change the grant, the scope of the grant? We'd have to write a letter and send it to Senator Stefano's attention. So I have his email address and everything that we could actually work on that tomorrow and contact the Army Corps. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, we qualify with it.
Okay, Clarence and Ron, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thanks, Kevin. Stay as long as you want.
Just, just one more thing.
Yes, sir.
When we had your original conference call, and it goes back a little while, I think some of you were on the phone call. You'd probably want to reach out to the gentleman from DEP, the guy from the Corps that was on that phone call, because they're the ones that were kind of seeing our project and the Corps' project. So those two guys would be the most knowledgeable to make sure things are straight. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
I think that's who the letter should go to, is the two without, right?
Yeah. I, I'm not exactly sure. Probably, that's probably going to have to go to DCED. And then they in turn will get somebody's blessing to make, to make that happen. And coordinate that through Stefano's, Stefano's office.
Yeah, and I think according to what Senator Stefano said, we want to send a letter to him as soon as possible. And then he can even guide us. He has a lot more, you know, power with the legislature and these committees than what we do, so.
You should have, you should have contacted DCED, your project manager. I would talk to her. I'm assuming it's the same one we've always dealt with before.
So we'll just keep everybody in the loop?
Yeah, contact Sandy and she'll, she'll help you walk through that.
Anything else?
Usually Pat Stefano does a letter to support what you're doing, like the commissioners do. He doesn't normally drive the happenings.
Unless you need to do it on the back, on the backside.
Yeah, that's, we, we've been down that road. Anyways, thank you, Kevin, for attending. Let's move on then. Larry Phillip, see you, Kevin. I sent an email around. He had done some measuring here. This is for the building, the handicap accessibility, and they didn't get to report together yet. So he is planning to be here with half drawings, half-size drawings at the July meeting. So we'll order that. Any questions on that? So we're going to wait till next month. Robert Hufford, is he here? No. He had some concerns, so that is a recognized guest. With that, we'll open a public comment. We'd ask if, okay, we ask public comment, just come right up here to the podium. So you're on the camera and speak. Each person has five minutes to speak. So Mr. Shook, come up, introduce yourself and.
Well, there's no mystery to it. I'm trying to be a little formal. Okay. First, I'm Carl Shook, everybody named anybody. I've come to make a little, if you want to call it a speech. I have a problem over there at the house, water. Then it comes from the street. Jeff's helped me last summer, but we had part of it squared away. Well, I told Brian about it. Well, he didn't get it going any further because it seemed like it was working. Well, now after the flood, not use that flood for an example. But it does not carry it away. I have water running in my cellar, I have running down in my yard. I put in a ton of shale to make a walkway, took the old wooden. And I'm lost about a quarter of a ton of that. Now it runs down in the front of the house, along the side of the house, and down into the yard. He was over the other day with Terry, Mr. Robert, and they checked it with the camera. And it's definitely plugged up. However, when I asked him when he would get to this, it was the same as when I asked the time before. Well, when, when we can get time, we're so busy. We've got signs and stuff to put up. Well, wait a minute. People, I know you need those signs up for legality, but my daggone house and the water that's running down in and giving me two inches of water in behind my tanks, I think comes a little ahead of four-wheel signs. That's my opinion. Rest of it's up to you then. There's some great big potholes right there in front of the house, too. And those potholes are coming from that drainage that I'm getting. So if you were to address that and if you need me to stay, fine. If not, I'm out of here. Thank you for your time.
Does anybody have any questions of Carl? The only thing I'd say, Carl, we did take applications. We're going to hopefully hire some extra workers and that may, somebody come along with Brian to assist to get your drain open. Because we really have a lot of work to do in the borough and we're anxious to move forward with getting some other.
Yeah, but it's got to be done because the next week it's going to be worse than what it is now. And I did say one thing. I've been thinking about it a little bit, but I don't have the money to do it for a temporary thing there because of that curb's not there hardly anymore. Can you get some of them bumper blocks, one or two lengths, cement them in or put tar down and set them on top or make a curb, at least help keep it. I need something done. Nasty.
We don't.
Too.
Sometimes you have to get.
No, you don't have to.
I know, I'm kidding you. But let's, we heard your concerns. Thank you for coming here. I appreciate that. So put that on your list, Brian. And how big of a job is it to clean this out? Like, do you get a rotor router to go in there?
Yeah, we were just talking. Our, we can run a jetter through it. It's just finding the time to run a jetter through it. So.
How long would it take?
Depends on how bad it is. I think no more than a half a day. Probably about.
Could you do it this week yet?
I'm sure. I can do it Thursday. Could be. Looking to for Thursday.
They said they would try to do this Thursday. I think we should try to help him out and see if this helps. I mean, maybe that drain isn't opening up. Maybe that's not the problem. But that would be a good place to start, right?
Yeah, and then like I said, there's, if you want to call it a curb, there's hardly any curbing out there anymore. What was put in when they, you know, put in the street, and block top twice, and it was that pot next one they put it in and from the plowing and just general puce. That's like, well, some places I don't have that much of a curb.
We talked about it just.
It's good for a little man that don't have to lift his legs, but it's not good for water.
Well, Terry, you can go ahead and tell him.
If we get paving done this summer, we'll have them come out and mill some of that down and put another curb in for you.
See, I, I'll say this too. I think we, as the borough, have to be a little bit more careful with this paving. I know back in 2004, I was adding onto my house and they paved 10th Avenue. And that's, that's time it's been paved, and I hope they don't pave it anymore. But it was up here and I had, every time I read a swimming pool in, in my backyard. The, the Bills, Bill Forrest and Bill Albright came out and they made an entire McAdam curve, curb. A little place to walk through and then it goes down. And that's been there for 20 years since 2004, and that solved the problem. But that's where we're going to have to be careful, I think, as we go forward with this paving. The last time they did Salisbury Street and Bill McKenzie was in charge at that time, they milled it down, Keystone Light, and they milled it all down. So I think if we maybe don't do as much paving going forward, but we emphasize on what's the net effect of this, just like the fellow that was here, same thing. I mean, I, I don't think he did anything wrong. What's Hufford? Hufford. I mean, he had a four-inch lip and then you pave up over that. Then the water's going to go right in your basement. So these, I just, I sympathize with you, Shooky. And give us a chance, see how things work out on Thursday. And we'll just keep coming back to the council meeting and we'll try to get this resolved for you.
My wife always says I'm paving, but you guys don't want me to be that way.
No, you're not. You're a nice guy.
Well, thank you. And, and again, thanks for putting up with me because it's just got to be done.
Okay. Thank you. We're over the five minute, we went a little bit over the five minutes, but this was important. So thanks for coming. We'll, we'll go again, public comment. We're still running. Anybody who wants to speak has five minutes. Brian, come up to the podium here. Are you still there, Mark? Mark up.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Ready? Five minutes, go.
Good evening. Nice to be known, Brian Witherick, live in the borough. Just wanted, we had some recent developments on some things that adversely impacted our family that it's been well overdue that we, so on. And to be able to do that, I'm going to start from reverse and then proceed to the current. So it's no secret, a couple of years back, a member of council made an effort to get us out of a home down on Second Street. We were homeless because of, I'll just say, for the purpose of time, conflicting opinions on different matters. And an effort was made to make us homeless. And then in the effort to secure housing in the borough, that was continually interfered with and that is well documented. And in place of, anything that I'm saying this evening is not hearsay or speculation. They are a matter of fact, in fact, I have a lot of supporting documents here with me this evening regarding it. I went to, during our transition, our rough patch, we'll call it. We were harassed by Ms. Nagy's relation as well. I went to the borough chief at, at the time, police chief, and to file a complaint in reference to it. I'm pretty sure I'm comfortable in saying that I know what reasonable suspicion and probable cause is. And I went to the former chief, brought that to him, and he abundantly said that he could not do anything because of the fact that if he would push forward a complaint of, of said allegations or violations of Title 18, which is a crime in the code, that he would have adverse impact on his employment here at the, the Borough Council monetarily and beneficial, with benefits that would adversely impact his family regarding that. So I ended up going to state police. They have all that on record. They have that on file. Recently, within the last couple of weeks, a neighbor informed us that a council member said that we filed a complaint on him regarding his yard and his, his upkeep. And told him, we never did any such a thing, never did it. He said, well, I was told by council, the council. He said, well, I was told by council, the council person, and up to two council people, that you did it, and appreciate it, and I'm like, never did. So, I did a right to know, got the accurate information, it's right here this evening. We did not, the Wetherrights did not file any complaint on anybody in this borough, never have. I am tired and exhausted of people reaching out far out of their purview and their election duties and their oath of office. Council has a due deal, a duty to address things. There should not be any resident of this borough or anywhere that can't go to their police department and ask for an action that's justified, and because of perceived retaliatory behavior of council, that they can't do their duties. That's unacceptable. The, this neighbor has been corrected, the fact that it was not us, and it's a shame that we had to get put it in, get it in writing from a right to no request on who filed that complaint and how it was investigated, have all the documents here, and I am asking that council formally look into these matters, because I can tell you, I'm the one speaking, but I am not the only one that's feeling this in our community. There are community members that I could probably fill this room up, that tired of actions of people, tired of the behavior and the forward, that rules apply to certain people, rules don't apply to other, and because you might disagree, then we don't want you in the community. Yeah, you can roll your eyes, Karen, go ahead, you can roll. All right? I have a constitutional right to say what I'm saying here, I've identified that with council, and I'm sure they're online watching this by you, all right? So, I'm asking council to, you know, everybody that lives here, pays taxes here, should be able to survive here, thrive here, and be treated equally here. We should not be, there should not be roadblocks put up, no matter who you are, what economic status you are, in reference to not living healthy, thriving, and being a productive member of this community. And I, and council's charged in making sure those standards are applied to everybody that, within reason and the duties of your office. And I'll yield my time, rest of the time, for that, and I have no further comment. That's just a brief summary, and I'm asking you, if you guys have the power to correct that action and do action, I am putting it on public record under advice, so that it's on public record, and that's all I have at this time.
Well, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're saying that a neighbor, someone, a council member, went to one of your neighbors and said that you were filing complaints against them for high grass, or what were some of the other things that they filed a complaint?
The condition of their property, the just, the upkeep, those types of things, and this comment was also, it was set in a, let's just say, a protected arena as well, and I said, never have done it. If I, if I've done something, I'll put my name on it. I've been, my family's been very quiet since this incident a couple of years ago, and there's a reason why we've been quiet. No one can, we're not social media warriors that, you know, if people think that you put something out on a Facebook page and just because you're not on their group, that it doesn't come back around. It's a, there's no privacy on social media, and just because you're, you have certain members that are in your little group, stuff gets out, stuff gets screenshots, stuff gets shared, and I'll leave it at that. You don't see me posting anything on social media, you know? That, it's, but to answer that fully, Jeff, we, we went to him, and he brought this up to us and said, council said that you, me, meaning me, Brian Wetherright, filed a complaint regarding his, his yard, his conditions of his house, dilapidated property, the upkeep of it, and I said, never happened, never done it. And I said, and I'll prove it to you. So, I did a right to know, I got the information. My name's not on the complaint, my name's not on the correspondence that was generated.
Do it.
So, I don't, why people are continuously attacking me and my family when we try to be productive members? I work hard, we keep our property up, we try to be productive members of our oath throughout the years while we've been here, have donated community service time, try to be productive citizens, you know? And some people just don't like that. Some people can't leave well enough alone and coexist even though you have differences, you know? And I'm done with it, and this was the last straw, and I'm asking you as a cap board to, to, you have control, you have a solicitor that can guide and direct you, and that's, that's my, my public comment.
Two questions, and then anybody else has any questions, and then we can move on. Are you patched up now with your neighbor?
No. That's, that's accurate, then? No. No. There's other things that I'm not saying that my wife and that person had a conversation, it was a productive conversation, but other things came to light, and I'm not sharing those at this time in reference to interference by council.
The last dream work I'll make is, you say council, and, I mean, I'd like you to be more specific. I've never done anything like that, ever, so when you say council, I mean...
He said it was a couple members.
He said it was a couple...
When I talked to him, he said it was a couple members.
And then, but you don't know who?
I think he's hesitant to say because it repercussions on him, because he's made the comment before, I'm staying out of it because I don't want it to happen to you happen to me.
Yeah.
I have a question. Has council ever had a complaint on any houses out on Sherman Street that has been privy to members of council? I've never seen any reports on any neighbors in that area.
Well, council members...
Right here.
I'm saying...
Well, you know what? Let's get past that, Mrs. Nagy. Let's talk about you putting people homeless, and let's talk about you putting them homeless and going around and saying, do not rent to them, do not sell to them, and going to places we were seeking housing.
There's people...
Don't reflect it.
There's witnesses for that. There's a reason why I've been quiet, and for a reason.
I'm not being quiet anymore, though. It happened.
It happened.
It happened. I have a letter from the person you bought it from, and you made a point to tell them when I purchased this property, it's to go unknown, or I will not buy the property.
Yeah, that's right. Actually certified.
It happened.
I don't stand up here because I don't know what I'm talking about. All we want to do is live in peace, and you've made it extremely difficult to do that. And I'm just, this is just the tip of the iceberg regarding it, but I am telling you as a council...
You need to be left alone as a family, you need to stop!
We are not the only people that feel this. You can't run over me with my job, I do a very good job, and there's a process, it's very strictly audited that way. You can't interfere with a lot of different things, but if you think that we're stupid and immune to this, and you're gonna just continue to run over it, I am... I have things lined up professionally that it will not... And I'm asking council, because the same people that were directing me, under my constitutional rights to be here, and protected rights to be here, have said that you as a council as a whole, when you're identified, that you have somebody that is acting out of the scope of their duties and responsibilities as an elected official, so I'm doing what I've been advised to, and this latest thing, this last couple of weeks, it was kinda like the water over the dam, you know? You might not like what I have to do professionally, I care less, you know what I mean? I do my job, I do it very well, all right? And when I come to a police chief here, and he tells me he won't do it, even though he knows I'm right, and I gave him all the evidence, and he says, I can't do it because I'm gonna get retaliated on, what, what, what are we doing here? How are you protecting every citizen? I don't care if the person has $10 in their bank account, or $10 million in their bank account, we're all people, we all have rights, and we all wanna live in peace, and we want what's best for everybody. We want to thrive, everybody wants to thrive and be better. You know, you don't have to come behind me secretly, you know? I'm not hard to find.
Well, if I can, we appreciate you coming, Brian, we've been going on here for some time.
I know.
I'd just like to say that Brian and I, you know, work very well together, as he's the president of the municipal authority, president of the council, I think we share a lot of, and I have very much confidence and high regards for you, your wife, and your family. So, I'm sorry that this has had to happen. I think at this point, maybe we can have some kind of an executive session at Mark's guidance next month, after the meeting, or have us, we are actually probably gonna have a special meeting, we'll get into that later, as far as hiring employees, but thank you for coming, and we'll take your words. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Wetherright, I know what you're talking about. I took you around to a home to see about renting it, and somebody interfered with that.
Yes, sir.
So, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'll, I yield my time, thank you, I tried to honor the time commitment, I know you asked some questions, I'll be here for a brief report for the MMA when that comes up on the agenda.
Okay. Brian, thank you, thank you for coming, and we'll have to do something, I think, to muck into this, we'll have to get our solicitors...
You ought to make sure that your police officers, because I've heard from three former ones directly, that they understand that the support of the council to do their jobs in, as there's, under their oath to do, for the betterment of all citizens of this borough in the due diligence of the work. And I, I, no one on that panel there, other than Ron Ackerman, can know that I'm qualified to do it, because he was in that position as cap, or chief at one time. I'm qualified to talk about those matters compared, contrary to someone's opinion that I might not be, I think I'm very qualified under law enforcement provisions.
Thank you both. Any other comments from council on this, if not, boy, it's for more, any other, anybody have anything else they want to say? Public comment? Now's the time. Just come up to the podium here, just like you're preaching a good sermon.
Why, miss, and the pastor can't get you off any. He's afraid to come up here without me, and then he gets hurt.
You make a lovely couple.
Thank you. I'll make that here.
This relates to a few days ago, knock on the door, and a policeman is there, what was his name?
Mark. Greg.
Mark.
Officer Craig.
Okay. I have no criticism for the officer, he was very kind, a gentleman, I just want to state that upfront. But he's telling me that they'd received a couple of phone calls about where I was parking my truck. Anybody that knows where we live, in the back there on Clay Street, I was parking along the wall of the building that we're in. And, well, first he said, we could park on the right side of the street, that's one way, you had to be so close to the curb. Then he finally said, well, you know, you could park on the left side, or up a little farther. But he got this complaint from a couple of people. Well, I told my wife, I didn't really suspect, I've never had any problems with a neighbor, but I felt that's where the call came from. Well, I found out I was right, I don't want to even identify. If that person were to come to me and said, I have a problem getting out of my garage with your vehicle parked where it is, I could probably bring a trash or trailer out of there, but certainly I could, I could pull my vehicle up a little, whatever, whatever's gonna help you. But I have ran into this parking situation when I was parking my truck in the garage, and right now I can't do that, but of trying to get my vehicle out of the garage, and vehicle being parked across the street right behind, and couldn't get out. And on one occasion, parking where our car is parked, backing out of garage, and I am not in any way wanting to ridicule Dr. Hanson, I don't want to say anything like that, I don't mean to, I would never say anything to him. I try to be a neighbor, but there's times that I went to back out of there, and with parking at his lot, driven across from my garage door, I couldn't hardly get out, and I went to back out one day, and there's a vehicle there, I thought I bumped it. So, I'm not gonna leave without finding the owner of that vehicle and see if I've created any problem. So, I go towards the entrance of their office, and this elderly lady's coming out, and I asked her if that was her vehicle, she said, yes, I pointed out this little spot I seen on her, towards the rearview car, and I said, look, you get an estimate, I'll see this taken care of. She calls later that day, and she says, I just remembered, I was in the cemetery and backed up and hit a tombstone, that's why that mark is on there, you didn't do that. But I wanted to be honest and upright about it. But my wife can tell you how long I...
Well, I've only been resident in Myersdale for 72 years. Before that, I was in Boston. But anyway, in 1971, we purchased the building that we now live in, which my house is a port shop. In 1972, we opened this port shop there. And for all those years, 50, about 54 years, we have parked behind that building, nobody has ever said a word to us that it was restricted. And I think the thing that upsets me the most, or maybe just hurts me a little bit, is the fact that someone would run to the police, rather than make a phone call and say, and could you ask someone to move the truck a couple feet so I can get out of my garage? That really upsets me. We are a small community, I work with the Maple Festival, we've all been really close people, and why can't we just go to each other and solve a little bit of the problem? But anyway, that's neither here nor there, the fact is, all of our employees, I've talked to them, none of them ever remember of anyone ever approaching them about the truck behind that building. So, anyway, that's about all I had to say, other than, like I said, I've been here for 72 years, I love the area, I love the town, but I think that we need to get a little bit more done about barriers, or whatever you want to do, because there, on the, on the street there, there are no parking signs like there're supposed to be. We have, he has an ordinance here that tells what he wants to do, and Grandma's gonna sit down.
You're saying there are, there are no parking signs there?
Well, I'll, I'll give the ordinance on that. Where I was parked, shouldn't have any problem with getting out of the garage. But all those times I've been blocked, I never called the borough, I never asked the police, I don't know if SWAT teams are gonna show up next, or what, but I'm a little slow, I had eye surgery today, and I'm in pain, I'm trying to breathe, but I've got the ordinance.
I know Reverend, our mayor, isn't here tonight, he would be the one that would probably comment on any actions of the police officer, you know, as far as the parking goes. I guess, Patty, we could maybe discuss this with Mayor Shane tomorrow or something, we could explain the situation, try to get this rectified, but...
The police officer said there was a couple of different people that complained.
But are there no parking signs there, or not?
Let me give you the... Order 216B, there shall be one hour time limit for parking on Clay Street from Center Street to Cherry Street. Cherry Street, my understanding is, above the ice cream stand on Main, where you turn to go out to Lake City. No parking. Now, like my wife said, I spent for years, I've worked there since we've been married 15 years, and her and her employees have worked there, the time they ran business, and it says there shall be...
worked there the whole time they ran business. And it says there shall be a one hour. Now, alone with that saying there shall be a one hour ordinance, three of one, section three talking about the penalty, any person parking or causing to be, to park any vehicle or accommodation of vehicles or any other thing upon all or any portion of any street, highway, road, or alley in violation of parking restriction regulation, promulgating as above provided, and that's in the rest of this code, shall be upon conviction be sentenced to pay a fine, if not more than $100 for each violation. Now, there wasn't anything said to us about a fine or anything like that. I'm not, I don't want to imply that. But under the provisions of this code, the provision, the section two of this code is erection of signs upon promulgation of any such resolution or regulation, the borough shall erect and maintain or caused to be erected and maintained signs designated the restrictions and regulations at each end of that portion of any street, each end. Highway, road, or alley where such parking is so restricted or regulated, and shall so erect and maintain such signs at other proper and required places so as to give reasonable notice of any restrictions, regulations to persons making use of said streets, highways, roads, or alleys. There are no signs where he holds them. We just double checked a moment ago before coming in here. From Center Street, there is no sign there at the end. Starting up along the Morgan Toll Building, there's a sign about two hour parking. But this says one hour. There's nothing about a two hour parking. That's on up the street. That's not the end of the street. So.
Well, you know what? We're coming up on about 10 minutes here. I kind of let, since your wife, we gave you each five. Real quick here, I mean, what are you asking? You would just like to continue to park there?
Yes.
You don't think you're having a problem? Maybe we could, I'll talk to Shane, write a note, and just see what we can find out.
Parking now, it's private property.
Do you know Shane Smith? He's our mayor right now. And I'm going to put here about Dr. Morris. Like I say, I wish he were here. He got called away with his job. There's some kind of a gas situation he had to deal with. So, but let us look into this a little bit and see, who can talk to Officer Craig and.
I kind of have a suggestion. It's just a thought.
Go ahead.
I know where your garage is located. I know where you park. By Hanson's office, we have that little alley that goes into.
Well, that's not, that's not the location where.
Yeah, I know exactly where you park. But what I'm getting at is the little alley that is behind Hanson's. We have that little bit of a rideaway that goes into the, into the park. It's between where FB Thomas Drug Stores parking lot was and Hanson's. You know what I'm talking about, Jeff, in there?
You remember?
What would happen?
We bump it. I think he wants to park close to you step.
Oh, okay. I mean, it's, it was just.
I have never complained about not being able to park in my garage and out of either garage. I've never complained about it. In one instance that happened during COVID, we had a bad snow. I, in COVID, didn't know if I was going to be here another day. My wife had an appointment at the doctor's the next day, and that, I will call that alley that comes back along Dr. Hanson's office, back to Clay Street. There was as much as 16 inches that had bloomed and drifted in that alley from our parking lot there across from the back of Dr. Hanson's. I went out and shuffled that whole alley out so I could get my wife to the hospital next morning. I wasn't up to nothing. But I didn't, I called this borough and complained. Streets aren't being taken care of or nothing like that. But I think there ought to be.
Would you, to move this along a little bit, thank you for coming. Would you be willing to go up and meet with Reverend Morris tomorrow? And maybe Brian could be maybe a liaison between he and the police to try to figure out a solution for you. And I know, you know, with, I'm starting to get that way too. Not easy to get around anymore. But I think if maybe Brian could come up tomorrow, would you do that?
Yeah, you can tell me a time.
And see if we can get something resolved. So you understand, is that okay?
After the meeting, we'll.
Talk to him after the meeting and come up with something, okay?
What time is the meeting usually hold?
I hope soon. I hope soon. I'm going to get my behind chewed out if I don't move things along here. So that's why, hopefully we'll be out here by 9:15. I'm going to push it through.
This is on YouTube?
Yeah, it's, go to Myersdale Borough. YouTube and just type in Myersdale Borough, and then the date's on there and you can watch it. It's being recorded live now.
Anybody could watch it.
Oh, yeah. You could watch it anytime, day or night. Go home and watch it. Assuming.
That's something that may be affecting numerous people in this borough. And it's a legal matter. It is fraud. But I don't want to send it out on YouTube. My wife and I are involved in this. Trying to get, take care of it. I'd like the council to know it, but I don't want it.
Well, we have to, it has to be, you know, the sunshine laws. But okay, thank you. We really, we got to go here. I'm going to say, public comment, more public comment. Any thank you for coming. But we got to move. Is there any other public comment? Going once? Last chance saloon. Going twice? Public comment is now closed. Thank you everyone for commenting. I'm coming. We appreciate your interest in local government. President's report. We do not need an executive session tonight. We're going to discuss our executive session, how it's, Patty knows it, a little bit later, how it's misleading, the way we're doing it right now. But, but we're not going to do that now. Mr. Mayor is not here, as I told you before. Junior council member is not here. Emergency management coordinator, Kevin.
So what happened, the fire department had a mark, which multi-agency, a lot of citizens came, the SBA came. They're here for two weeks. That's not the end of the, that's the end of meeting with somebody face to face and talking about it. The SBA still goes on, and their deadline for physical damages is the 21st of July. For businesses with economical damage, it'd be February 23rd to 26th. So you apply for the SBA first. If you're denied, Pennsylvania has a D-RAP program, and that's end of August 25th of this year. And that's the same here to tell you tonight. If there's still people that are seeking, still have damages that they want to go through the SBA or through PMA, that's the routes they can go. And a side note, fire department lost their fire alarm system to, they're talking to your insurance. So that's all I have. Anyone else anything?
You had indicated before the meeting that you had a question, then you could leave. Under new business, we have listed disaster mitigation and next step?
Yeah.
And you, Brian, didn't quite know what, I mean, Kevin.
Yeah, if I needed to stick with that or not, I didn't know.
Well, we'll do it now. It's on there. It's under new business, disaster mitigation and next steps. See, under new business, and I'm not sure why that's on there, but.
Karen asked what, under new business about the flood disaster next steps?
Yes.
Maybe we could just discuss that since Kevin's here, then he could take off.
Okay. Um, I wondered, have we sent out thank you notes to all the various organizations that have helped with the disaster recovery?
I didn't send out any today, but.
We should probably do that. I would like to see us apply for $10,000 to help citizens with their losses through the community foundation. What does everybody think about that? I mean, it'd be a nice way. The county commissioner set up this bond. They contributed $10,000. There are a lot of people. Did the volunteer center, Kevin knows, for a couple of days. And there's a lot of people lost everything. We donated some appliances personally. That's what the funds are there for.
Could we have a motion to apply for the $10,000 grant?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Karen, in a second. A hundred seconds. But all those in favor, say aye? unanimous?
Like we did the other one for the Christmas lights, and then I'll review.
Is that it, then, through this?
No.
Okay.
So the USDA, Joel sent me today. The USDA has an emergency watershed protection program that can help with debris, clogged waterways, unstable stream banks, and all of those things. I really think, and he encourages it, and we should probably look into that if we need more funds for the flood control. Does anybody want to look into any more money for the flood control, or we're going to just have that in our back pocket to see if the money we have will cover it? I'm concerned with Kevin when we spoke. I mean, we could go over, you know, once they get entrenched in there. I mean, we might want to look into some more money if somebody wants to do that. I have the information.
Would you just do it? Well, is there a motion to move forward with this? If not, if nobody makes a motion, we'll move on to the next item.
Okay. So one of the big culprits in town to the flooding within the borough was the storms. Mr. Shuck was here earlier. I think there were a lot of those. Ashley Price, Palm Peru, a lot of them. Tess Schaefer, a lot of them had a lot of water in the basements. If I had to guess, and Kevin, you probably know better than me, I would say probably half the houses in town had some water coming into them.
It was in the hundreds, yeah. It was.
There's a lot of homes. So, so when I talked to the Army Corps today, they said they have a division, they're sending me money, the information. They have a group that may help us map the storms. They have a full department that does that. He was checking into it to see how many projects they had lined up. If they would be willing to do that, then we could work through PMA and they may fund that project. And as we've talked, you know, the first step is, we don't have the storms mapped. And then the second phase would probably be going, once they were mapped, so we could see the size of all the storm drains, see where we're lacking them, see what improvements we can make, and then actually see about getting them unclogged, getting new catch basins put in place, and whatever we need. Again, I think after this flood disaster, I think we really ought to try to get something going with our storms.
Anything else?
No, just if people want to do that for our town.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, that takes care of, you're okay to go if you wish, or you can stay if you want. Moving on, where are we here? Solicitor's report. Okay, Mark. Maybe we just, Mark, are you there? Oh, Mark. Let me try to recall him.
Well, I said, we're on two minutes before I realized he was there.
Okay, maybe you had us muted. Go ahead. Can everybody hear this?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I said, I took all the air out of the meeting, the meeting last time with my long laundry list of things I'm doing. I haven't heard anything back yet from the county as to 326 Saltberry Street. My understanding is they've been very busy with flooding and other issues going on. I hope to have an update on that soon. I have been working on the ordinance and proposed changes with respect to zoning that we discussed, and I hope to have it ready prior to the July meeting. The High Street Bridge project, there are no updates on that. And all the litigation is moving forward, and we'll have to discuss some issues at the July meeting.
So you're saying we'll probably need an executive session at the July meeting?
Yes.
Okay, continue.
And that is all I have.
I can't get my breath. Any questions for the solicitor? Okay, thank you, Mark. That has to be our record for shortness. But we appreciate it and thank you for.
I think it works next time.
Okay, next time you'll be here. Okay, code enforcement, thank you, Mark. PMCA, I threw grass complaints in here. I don't know if it's listed anywhere else on the agenda or not. We've been getting a huge, not huge, but a significant number of complaints with long grass. I know in the past, last year, we had a couple, Patty, I, I made a few calls, you did. But I guess we want to decide, again, the mayor's not here to guide us as far as how much the police could help in this situation. But what does council think as far as having ideas? Do we just write them down, call Ed from PMCA and have the burrow maker complain? That'll cost us some money. Did we want to try to get the addresses and let Patty? I would help her. Call these people. A lot of times, a simple polite phone call will do wonders and save us some money. But Patty will tell you, we're just getting a number of high grass complaints. Three properties on Broadway and down here on their corner at the As MacIntyre House, that's getting pretty bad. What is it?
Keystone Street. The approach used to be.
So I guess we'd like to have some guidance from council as far as what, what do you want to do? How should we move forward with this?
Why can't our police handle that? We're in a small town. I worked there. You were the criminal investigator. You were the accident investigator. You'd handled the ordinance. Why, what are they doing that they can't handle that? You don't need to take a second and knock on the door and say, hey, would you please move your yard? That's all we had to do.
Patty, if, going with Ron's say here, if you would get a list, and I would be willing to call Mayor Shane tomorrow, or you could, and just ask him if the police would be willing to contact these individuals, if they need assistance, like the fellow that we have problems with down on Salisbury Street that lives away from here, you may have some information as far as contacting them. But do we want to try that maybe first and see what the mayor says as far as if the police would be willing to? What does everybody else think?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you get the list tomorrow, I'll stop over in the morning, and then we can get our heads together.
I definitely circle back. So the complaint that Brian referenced, was that circulated to council? Did we have any way of knowing that? I would like to know.
You could. You could have come in and looked at the.
Did I come in your office and look at anything?
No, nothing. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, maybe our solicitor could, did you hear Mr. Reverend Wright's complaint?
Yes.
Okay. Could you look into that and advise us?
Yeah, council wants me to. I will do so.
I think we should put this on the agenda, Mark. You're the solicitor for both. Should be also on the executive session agenda for July.
Okay, I will do so.
But now let's.
I don't think any of us will tolerate abusive power.
I don't think, yeah, any of us will tolerate abusive power.
Amen.
I would love my street paved and...
Okay. So, we're gonna try that for the grass complaint. And if that, if the police don't want to do anything, then I guess Patty will just, I'll help you call them. We'll just have to get names and call. And I know there were two that I worked on last time, and then you, and we were able to get it resolved. But it seems like we have more this year. There's more people not known.
There's more on that one on Grace Street, it could be a problem because I don't think anybody's there. I don't know who owns it.
Ashley Price messaged me. She saw that on the agenda, or saw it somewhere. And she said the mother and the sister live in New Jersey. And she was gonna reach out to them.
Okay, um, moving along here, committee reports, Brian, again, MMA, do you have any for the municipal authorities?
Yeah, just a few updates. One, you know, Terry, if you speak really, the, the employees of the MMA post-flood have been extremely busy. Diverted from a lot of primary duties to play catch-up and, and dig into a lot of things, both in town and at our supply, uh, at the watershed up on top of the mountain. And, um, on behalf of, well, we can't thank them enough. They, they have just responded tremendously on behalf of our community for the water and sewer end. And, I mean, words can't overextend how appreciative we are for the work that they, they all do. Secondly, you know, we're, there's, there's been conflicting reports out there again circulating that the, the legal, Little League Ball Field project is being delayed by the MMA. And any, anybody that's invested parties regarding that, I want to tell them that, look, anything that our solicitor has brought forward, any documents that need to sign, any actions by the board, we have not delayed that, tabled it or nothing. We have moved that in any way possible to get that to the finish line so that that can be put to rest. So, on behalf of the MMA, for me and the other members on the board, the board as a whole, there is not one of us that are not supportive of this project, getting it moved on and putting it to rest. Anything that Solicitor Valentine has asked me to, and the board to review, approve, sign, that has all been done. There's nothing laying in abeyance for the MMA to do regarding that project at this time. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that everybody knows that. Because we, you know, it's a good thing for everybody. And unfortunately, this good deed project has extended longer than anybody ever anticipated. But the MMA is not holding that project up in any capacity.
Well, is it finished now then?
Um, Solicitor...
Because we're out of it.
Solicitor Valentine can give that update a little bit on it. There's...
Go ahead, Mark.
The deed group is, is currently working on the survey so that we can do that. If you guys recall, we had to do a subdivision plan to be able to deed it off. Now it has to be subdivided from the authority because the authority had owned portion of that field. The borough had owned the Alaska portion, those have been put together. And now we have to subdivide that off the main portion that the authority has to get that approved. So, we're in the process of getting that survey and a subdivision plan submitted. Once that is submitted and approved, the deed should be issued and there should be no other issue.
Yeah.
So, it's moving forward?
It is.
I appreciate that, Brian, so...
Yeah, I just wanted everybody to know that we're moving as quickly as we can. Other stakeholders, you know, you know, that pauses various parts. And then again, as a reminder, you know, the, the operations are all down there at the, uh, the maintenance area. Uh, that, that's been up and running for a little bit now. So, we're, we're settling in and, uh, but it's been a busy spring for, for Terry and the guys. And thank you for, again, for moving, um, Mr. Miller and Sarah forward because they've, they've been great to have on board to help with the matters of the MMA, so thank you.
They're working out well?
They are. So, we're, we're pleased to have them and thank you for council's efforts in getting them, uh, to bring them forward. Thank you.
And then there's no conflict, they have no conflict. So, they can make decisions and, uh, I, I like that. I don't like these conflicts.
We've been trying to get them up to speed on various projects, Terry can attest to that. Um, so initially, they've been getting the, the fire hose instead of the water faucet because of all the information that's been out there to get done. But, uh, we're, we're blessed to have them and, and thank you. So, I look forward to a continued productive year on the board.
Wonderful. Street foreman, I only have one thing. And this is from the vegetation managers. They had given me a quote to spray of $2,020.58. Could we get that approved for them to spray the flood control? It's budgeted.
It's budgeted. It's a little bit higher than what it was last year. Reason being, they did not get up on Keystone Street. So, that part will be added this year.
Could we have a motion? Ron and Tom, all those in, Clarence Thursday, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? That's unanimous, is that it?
That's it. And without being said, could I sneak out and talk to them if they want to leave Omaha with...
Sure. Yeah, that would be great. If they don't mind, uh, maybe you could get a little...
Unless they want to stay, it's up to them.
Talk to them. Just go ahead, Brian, I'm gonna keep the meeting running here, but you can do it. Mom, anybody here from Mama? There he is.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, welcome.
How you doing?
Good.
All right, uh, we will be holding our Marsalory Merchants Association meeting, the annual meeting, uh, Monday, June 30th. We'll be 6:00 PM at the Nibidale Mansion. We will be providing snacks and all that. We have several guest speakers coming from Skerta, and they're gonna be talking about some projects and a way ahead for that program with us being a trail town. There could be professionals come out and see what they're talking about. Something we're excited about, we're gonna be introducing and demonstrating Constant Contact. It's a web-based program that's gonna provide a e-type bulletin for all of our merchants. So, basically, it's free advertising monthly to all of our members. Uh, so if they want, like, I could use to say about where I'm at. Any business could talk about what they want, got going on, and we can get more people involved in that. We will also be finalizing our nomination process and electing a new executive board at that meeting. So, please come on out if you can. And because that is our annual meeting, there will be no monthly meeting in June. On the farmer's market, uh, we had last event last Thursday. The weather was good. We started off with nine vendors, which doesn't seem like a lot, but we had a great variety. And, uh, we do have more vendors coming. One of the big holdups on getting vendors was school's closed session. So, now the school is out. We have several more vendors who will be coming in the following weeks.
What are the hours?
8:00 AM till 1:00 PM.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, I'm excited to let you know that we're gonna have up to five produce vendors here in about three weeks. And, uh, one of the issues we're having right now is there are no local crops available. So, everybody's wanting to buy it, auction it, everything, and bring it in from someplace that's not local. Uh, so here in about three weeks, as those crops start to develop, we will have five produce vendors. I go to many farmer's markets. If they have two, that, that's a big deal. So, if we're gonna have five, that's gonna be great. Now, while we were down there, as the president of Mama, I went out and talked to every customer I possibly could. And there was some satisfaction with the return to the market. They're happy we have them back and hopefully will continue to grow. Uh, they're also very happy with it being at Fuller Playground. Uh, it just makes sense to have it down there, they're happy about that. I talked with the vendors. Be overwhelmed or rushed by customers. Hopefully, we'll have that problem at some point in the future. But they were, they were happy with the flow, and every vendor we had said they will return. So, I think we're off to a decent start. So, if you get a chance, come on out this Thursday. Uh, Facebook feed for us. And that actually reminded a lot of people, people showed up because of her feed, uh, just because they weren't tracking. So, we want to do a better job of advertising, getting the word out. And, uh, if Brian's still here, I, I, I just wanted to thank him for giving us help or setting up, helping us get set up with the tables and the buildings. Any questions?
Wasn't there ribbon cutting or something?
There was a ribbon cutting. I was trying to figure it out, yeah, then. Uh, so in the, uh, the old Marsalory Boutique, we have a new owner, Clarissa. She's from Berlin. I don't know the hours or anything, but we have a new business in town here, uh, owned by a mid-family. Donna Otto, uh, I believe is the former owner. She has been mentoring her along, and, uh, we're excited to have them, so thank you for that. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your attendance. And, uh, it was a good report. Public library, no one is here. Community events, Clarence, anything on the community events?
Yeah, community events, uh, there's the father and daughter dance at the Elks.
They changed to Friday, didn't they?
Uh, I couldn't look at.
Yeah.
Saturday's the band, and we are trying to work around with the Elks also with the Flag Day ceremony, which is, and then the Elks are gonna do the Flag Day ceremony. And then everything looks like we're pretty well set up for the Fourth of July ceremony. The duck and tank and, uh... And they also asked about, they wanted to order shirts that has like staff, so people know who to talk to about stuff. If we had enough money. We have money for that.
How many shirts?
Seven, so seven shirts.
Probably about 15 bucks.
Yeah.
Just order them. Does anybody object? We have to look official.
Yeah. If not, I was gonna pay.
Well, if that's the case, then...
I can, make my donation. It doesn't matter. Okay. If it's a lot, I'll send it if it's not. I don't know, that pretty well covers us right up until, uh...
Christmas.
Halloween.
Halloween. Any questions of Clarence?
Except for our regular dances, uh, the dance is scheduled, so...
Okay. Thank you, Clarence, for jumping in there, and I'm sure Ginny appreciates you also taking charge of this. Thank you. Absolutely.
The donations for the fireworks all weigh down. I have $2,000 that just came in today from Summers and Trust, but it's gonna be really short.
I'm gonna, I didn't, haven't sent money yet. How much do we have to?
Okay, we have 57.65 in the account, and then the $2,000, we got $7,000.
And we need 12.
$12,000 show.
Roy Ball may have pledged that if, uh, if we wanted him to do it, I never ate, but he asked about because he did last Christmas. And he said he could do an hour show for $9,000 without insurance. With insurance, it's $11,000. And that's for an hour show.
Well, at this point, I, I think it's too late to...
To change.
To change would be my opinion. Do we have any kind of a contract with...
I don't know that the mayor handles that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that was the offer that was given.
But we have, we saw some time. We saw some time. Anything else, Clarence?
No, it's all right.
Um, renaissance? Then we'll go to council, members, the police, public, probably nothing there. Okay, uh, this is under Personnel Committee, hiring part-time seasonal worker. Okay. We have six individuals who have applied for positions. So, I thought, after talking to some people, what we're gonna do, we're gonna allow the street committee and Brian to do interviews. The interviews will be June 16th, which is a Monday, at 6:00 PM. Patty's gonna set it up. The street committee is your chairman, you're on it, and Tom Smith, okay? That, there's no conflicts there, and they're gonna interview all six people. It's my understanding that one of these individuals is underage and does not have a driver's license. Under, is 15 years old. So, that we're gonna have to figure out if it's even worth them coming because I would think they're disqualified already because they don't have a driver's license, which is a prerequisite. So...
So, how does personnel weigh into that? How does personnel weigh into that?
They don't.
How, how would they not?
Okay, Karen, these jobs are to deal with the streets, with Brian. And they know what needs to be done. They've worked with some of these individuals before. And according to what Ron said, the street committee has entered, has done this in the past, not personnel. Now, for hiring something else like clerical, but this is specific for the street. That's where they're gonna be working. Brian should also be at this meeting to go over everything too. So, that's the way we're gonna do it. If you want to take a vote, I'll ask for a motion so you can say personnel or not. Our personnel chairperson, um, I had tried to get in touch with her this evening and to no avail to this buyer. So, um, we want to move forward with this. The, uh, street committee will do the interviews starting at 6:00 PM. Patty's gonna set it up. I won't be here. So, Tom, you're available, Ron's, and, okay. Then you'll come with, and Brian, uh, also, who has to work with him and knows exactly what has to be done. Then, I would like to call, as your president, a special meeting on that Thursday night, June the 19th, at 7:00 PM. And that would be to actually receive the recommendation from the street committee and then move forward with hiring them. And if you want to just make the meeting short, um, we would just do that. If we wanted to have our executive session that night, Mark said there's issues that we have to deal with. We could have an executive session that night also, but just, we want to keep it short. You understand what I mean? With just hiring the people and then going into executive session with, with, uh, we have some legal things that are going on. And, um, so, but that would be something that I'd ask council. If we don't do the executive session then, then we have to wait and do it at the July meeting, which is gonna be longer. So, what does everybody think? I mean, well, that, if we want to get these workers hired, we gotta get moving, so...
How long do we usually keep them?
Well, we, maybe 11 weeks? I heard eight or 11 weeks.
I figured around 11 weeks till fair time, okay.
Now, the other thing, um, we would have to decide, and I'm not sure we have to make that decision tonight. I would ask the street committee to make recommendations like, say, number one, number two, and number three. Then we have to decide, do we want to hire one, or two, or three individuals? This is something that I think the street committee and Brian can discuss, and then they can come to a recommendation with the council for that. So, um, questions?
Two table lands are beginning?
Two.
Two from table land.
Yeah. I thought Brian did say that to have five total might be a little bit too much. So, he was thinking maybe if we would get, and, and again, these are, the main reason I suggested this is to get these side-by-side signs up. I mean, this is for a specific purpose. This isn't just to get people in here and pay them. And I think we can definitely afford to for 11 weeks. So, it's gonna be up to the street committee to do this. I don't think we need a motion for that. I, as president, can, um, uh, assign that. But then as far as the special meeting, could we have a motion to have that meeting on Thursday, June 19th, 7:00 PM, with or without the executive session? Thank you, miss, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, in a second. Ron? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. So, we'll advertise that. Throw out the witness. So anyways, you'll advertise that appropriately. The main reason will be to hire employees at the, um, suggestion of the, after the interviews, to go into executive session for personnel. And what else? Should we list this executive session?
Personnel, and that, that should be good enough.
Okay. Okay. Then I don't know if we'll have to see if we want Dan to tape it, it'll only be a quick meeting, we'll have to, we can talk about that. Okay, so we have that taken care of. Anything else under the Personnel Committee? Finance, we discussed. How about the refuse contract? Are we still on hold on that, Mark?
Yes, we haven't received anything in writing besides the statement that we got months ago and you guys voted on to continue in the same contract, but there's been no further writing on that.
Streets, oh, here, we have to, I don't know if everybody. I had a telephone call, not a meeting, a telephone call from Jason from DAR on Friday morning. The telephone call lasted about fifty-two seconds and he wanted to know how he could distribute the elevation drawings. And I told him to send it to Patty and Patty will distribute it to everybody. There was no meeting, so that's all that involved. So then somehow, we didn't get them out until today, so did people read over these elevation drawings? I mean, they're kinda Greek to me, but if there's no objection, then Patty will let Patty get in touch with Jason tomorrow morning and tell him to go ahead and order the windows. As far as I'm concerned, I guess we've already approved this. Just for his, like, last chance saloon before he orders, you know, and then something's messed up. So could, I'm assuming everybody looked at that? Could we have a motion then to make it official that we approve the elevation orders that Jason sent to Patty and she distributed this morning? Is there a motion? Okay, Terry and Tom. Okay, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, unfinished business. I read this social media policy three times and I think it looks good. I'm not a lawyer, I mean, there's probably things you could put in there, maybe things you shouldn't. I'm gonna say that we have a discussion here and I know everybody listens to when the president tells them to read something, right? You've read it twice, Clarence?
No.
I know, Tom, so I'm prepared to say we go forward with this. If you haven't read it and there's not enough understanding of this, then we can put it off, but I ask, this has been kicking around here and it only takes, it's a five, ten-minute read. So, social media policy, if there's a major discussion on it, we can put that off till next month. But what do we think here of this social media policy?
This is the borough manager, we don't have. Not that's a big deal, but.
There. It's a section. I mean, I don't care, I just, this thing, I think Mark, sister of the borough, that we, so.
Should we accept the policy?
With her change.
With her change.
Okay, Tom makes a motion, Claire nods a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, we have accepted the policy, Mark.
It's a great policy.
It's wonderful. And then Patty, maybe you could tape it up, tape it up, type it up and send it to us. Okay, thank you so much. The ADA Restrooms and Grant Applications, I think we're gonna discuss that extensively next month when our engineers are here. A zoning ordinance review, I'd like to maybe kick that can down the road since we have made some progress on the social media policy. You won't have to have that social media policy on the agenda next time. Yard waste, now there's something. We haven't made any progress on where people take their yard waste. Brian, could you kinda root around and see if you could come up with a place that, the borough? I guess we'd have to pay someone to accept this. It's yard clippings, it's not like Pepsi-Cola cans.
Yeah.
You and Terry. Five, 326 Salisbury Street, anything new on there? Mark?
Yes, sir, I already reported on that.
Okay, that's right, you did. A new email address.
New email address. Everybody already has the email address for Patty. It would take how long for everybody to get it? God only knows. And the same way with the DocuSign. I don't see the purpose of having that. We have you going over to the office, signing whatever documents need to be signed. The rest of us very seldom sign anything. Even if there is something, we don't have to be that lazy that we can't go over to the office and sign.
Hi, Brianna.
Clarence? We've had the email address since Patty, since before we were on here. I mean, I have a colleague who's a dentist and he has a top-shelf computer system and he got hacked and he had it backed up on the internet and, or on the cloud, I guess, and he was able to restore it. So, I mean, I don't think, really, Karen, there's support to change the email address at this time. DocuSign, let me just say this, I recently was asked to write a letter of recommendation for a lovely young female dentist-to-be and I, of course, agreed. I said, yes, I'll be happy to do it. The individual has shouted at the office probably about a dozen times or more. So I gave her my email and this link came. So I clicked on the link and there was no DocuSign. In fact, DocuSign sounds pretty cheap compared to this. I had to use my stationery with our J.I. logo color, write the letter, date, sign it, scan that in the blue ink, different colors. Then you go onto this, I can't remember the name of the, but you go onto the website, click here, upload document, and I uploaded it. And so there the letter is, signed in blue ink. It's a perfect, you know, representation. So, I mean, I don't, they didn't use DocuSign. I mean, it was pretty elaborate what I had to go through, but it didn't take long, you know what I mean? So I don't think this doc. Patty and I have a wonderful relationship as far as business and signing things. I'll say Patty, you need this, you want me to come over this morning? I prefer, personally prefer to just sign in this blue ink and then we send it through the mail. So I don't think Patty is real thrilled with this DocuSign and I just don't think Karen, there's support on either of these issues to move forward. So, so you have that. And then the all-call. Now, I will say, Patty, you've been working with Bree and I'll let you explain it, go ahead.
Yeah, the last meeting, I thought it would be a really involved process and you'd have to use a database from another company, but as Bree explained, it's pretty simple. But she just has not had the time yet, her, she has some family problems going on and she's been awful. Soon as she can get around the show and me and give me the password, we'll work together, we'll get that.
So you'll be able to sign through their system, but you'll have that capability? So I think that's good news. Like with the flooding, Brian, we couldn't, we had, yeah, okay. Anything, any other questions on the all-call? Okay, new business, any announcements? Okay, repairing the uptown cameras. I guess, Brian, I'll let you go ahead and take that, you were the one that brought it to my attention. It's gonna be expensive.
I don't know what the cost is. Lou Jaren stopped down to do some work on the cameras at the playground about, I'd say, two, three weeks ago. And he proceeded to tell me that he was working on the cameras at the town. There's only one working, I don't know, I don't know who has access, who doesn't. But he checks all the cameras that he has access to. He checked these, they were dead. He's been coming in, doing things for us fairly reasonable. Right now, he would have to bring a bucket truck and he would have to charge to do that. He wanted to know if you want him to do that, which Shane isn't here right now. I look at it as, why do we have cameras if we can't use them or, you know, whoever can use them?
I think you and I agreed that we wanted to do it.
Yes.
But we didn't wanna make that decision without council's input. Maybe you don't wanna do it.
I have a discussion and I can call with tomorrow and get a general idea of the cost and let you know and maybe you could let these guys know tomorrow if you wanna do it that way.
It'd be good.
Yeah.
We're paying a lot of money for Internet.
Those every month?
Yeah, I don't even know who has access.
But is it the cameras that are broken or, well?
According to what he said, the cameras need updated and you cannot do that through the computer. You have to do it through the cameras. I don't know who has access to those cameras and who doesn't. He does, he knows who has access. I think he said Shane is the only one.
Right. It used to be the tree.
Well, let's say, go ahead and do it, maybe if it's $2,000 would be, if it's more than that, we have to come back to council, or $500 or $1,000, I don't know.
I'll maybe wait and talk to the mayor, see if they're even being used, if anybody's even looking at it.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, then let's just wait and put it on the July agenda. Okay, we did the disaster mitigation, Christmas lights, Karen?
Yeah. So as you guys know, the, the Christmas lights that we chose were discontinued. So they sent us a new option. It's the Nativity Star, again, a side mount, thirty-four inches, so they're bigger. There is an additional cost. So I took a ride around today. So with the doughboy, we have the one double light pole. If I counted right on Center Street, we have about seventeen light poles. Main, if we go above the, so up Main and down Main, from the railroad tracks to down here, I think there's like nineteen. There's six if we go above the track. And what I noticed today on the left-hand side, going up the hill to the train station, there's one light pole that the whole top is missing. Are we addressing that?
That's, I already talked to Leroy, he's checking and getting us a new pole.
Okay. Then at the square up here, we have four triples. And then we also have to take into consideration, I think John Smala and his group were gonna take care of the three in the park. So when I count, you know, thirty-six, which is what we were originally gonna order, would really take care of about every triples, the doughboy and the park. But I think we could use, you know, maybe, will the wreaths fit at the red light on the triple posts or not?
Which, the big ones?
Yeah.
There's smaller wreaths for those.
For those, okay. So maybe we would do a combination in a few places. So I think we have two choices. I asked Patty how much we have in the Leckenbee Fund. We have just under $13,000. And what did we get from the community foundation?
Thirty-six hundred.
Hundred. So it's up to everybody. If we want the numbers to be, so it's about an additional $2,500. So we have the money if we wanna get, the odds of getting more of the same down the road, you know how that goes. So we can do whatever. If, I calculated if we only wanna get like thirty and keep our costs the same or, you know, it'd be nice if we did still get all thirty-six. And the only other comment I would have is, you know, John Smala and his group, Mr. De Pasco on them, they committed to the lower price. I don't know that we wanna go back to them and ask them to pay more. So it'd be kinda nice if we made them whole on their three. But anyway, I have all the paperwork if anybody wants to look at it.
One thing I will say, I want to interrupt you. Now, these light poles, you're not gonna put doubles on any of the light poles, like both sides?
No, just one side.
Okay, because there is a weight difference.
And these don't weigh.
Are you trying to shut it off? Clarence, you're trying to be able to, payment being. Well, you know what? Do we have the money in the Leckenbee Fund? Christmas is a wonderful time. Why don't we just go ahead and order what Karen recommends and I just say, she's worked hard on this and it just seems like, you know, things change and everything. You count on one price and then it's different, it never goes down, usually.
The overage is thirty-eight hundred?
Yeah, it's around thirty-eight hundred because the first price, they didn't have shipping included yet.
And they said they figure high on shipping. So it'll probably be less.
Why make the motion if we go ahead and get the additional weights?
Thank you, Tom. Was that you seconded? Karen was nodding the second, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? They're all unanimous so far tonight.
You wanna call Nita or be going?
It doesn't matter. I don't, are we making the, the G.I. guys whole? So they don't have to pay additional than what they donated already? I don't think they actually paid. But I don't wanna ask for the money.
I agree, I agree with you. I think that was in Tom's motion, I don't.
So we're gonna order thirty-nine?
We need, okay.
Can you email Nita?
Plans for Myers Avenue Borough property.
Is that?
My neighbor wants to know if they're going to try to bid that property out, you know, understanding that the road goes up through the center, you know, they have that. But the rest of the property, you know, if they wanna bid that out and then they could mow it and keep it trimmed and everything.
Are they interested in buying it?
Yes. Yeah, they're interested.
What would be the advantage of, we have to put it out for bids, what would be the advantage of keeping it?
I don't see any.
If we get, that's less mowing.
We do have a water line down through there, the peeps, you're, have your house there, Ron. We didn't wanna give that right away out.
Nope, nope.
That would have to be.
That'll be in the.
Yes, thank you, Terry, if that's important.
Thank you.
Well, do we wanna make a motion to allow Mark to move forward with the advertising and put it out for bid?
Yes. I'll second that.
Maybe since you live up there.
Oh, okay.
So does he, I'll just let him, let him complain. Ron seconds it and Tom, Ron makes a motion, Tom seconds it, do we put that property out for bid? Did you get that? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. The zoning hearing board position is going to be up in July. I guess we have to advertise it. I think Lee Ann Remzi has done an admirable job, she enjoys this. I did call her and say that she is, she told me she would be willing to give you a letter, Patty, and put her name in. But we still have to advertise it, but like I say, at least we have somebody that's interested in doing that and I think she would, you know, since she has experience. So I guess we have to make a motion to advertise that. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Clarence, Terry, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? Unanimous. The Uniform Construction Code Appeal Board, now I'm not too familiar with that. This came along after I was, during my sabbatical, so I'm not even sure what they do. But all three of them in the alderhood are up. Do we really need this thing? What's the purpose for it? Do we ever use it?
It's maybe one time.
That board was formed by ordinance along, was supposed to be formed a long time ago. It was never actually filled. time ago, it was never actually filled. It, it is for the purpose, we had somebody who appealed a code provision, we're required to have it. We should have a staggered board if possible, that doesn't have all the members up at once. And when you appoint people, I would suggest that we appoint them in a staggered format, so that, you know, that experience doesn't leave every time the board changes.
Okay, well, I guess what we would do, Patty, would be advertise, there are three, four positions, there are three.
There'd be four.
Because there's.
Three board members and an alternate.
And then what we could do would be come up with, like you said, Mark, we would assign one of them, the term would expire next year, one in two years, one in three years, and then we'd be on, and the alternate would be probably making the three years also. And then we could set it up that way, so it would be staggered. But could we have a motion then to allow Patty to advertise for this and see who we get? If anybody knows anybody, okay, are you making the second, Terry? Okay, one and two. Terry and Karen, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. If anybody knows somebody that's on there, and, and you want to explain that, if they're interested in being on it again, they have to write a letter, or else notify Patty, you don't really need something written. Okay, and this last item here, okay, hear me out on this, and this is not Patty's fault. I think our agenda, and I'd like to ask for a motion that we change this tonight, the way we have executive sessions listed is very, very confusing. Like, tonight, there is no executive session, number, this is just my opinion, number 17 should not even be on there. Nothing. Not executive sessions can be held for the following reasons, dah 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 dah. That should not even be on there. If there's no executive session, there's nothing listed about it on the agenda, because people are getting confused, like, tonight, you could say, oh, executive session, and then up under my report, it said executive session needed for personnel matter, but I talked to the solicitor, and we didn't need one. So, I would ask council, if, would, that we amend the agenda, we change the agenda that executive session, and then if there's an executive session, then you put 18 after the executive session, and then if we have to have an executive session, it's listed, executive session needed four, like we're going to do. Go ahead, Mark.
You don't need to vote to change that, that, that needs to be changed with respect to the sunshine law, unless we have a specific purpose to have an executive session, we should not list an executive session, and the only way then to have an executive session would be then to amend the agenda in the meeting and add it if it wasn't already on there. I would also add that if we're including any issue in an executive session that wasn't already intended to be included, that needs to be amended so that it's part of the executive session. The other thing that we need to do, we changed a lot in the last year legally, is we need to be more specific, and I'll do a better job of working with Patty on that, so we're more specific, so that when somebody reads the agenda, they have a right to know, like, for example, litigation, what that actual litigation is, and they have a right to know that. So, that is, you know, that's one of the things we'll have to do too, because that'll bring clarity to this, and it'll also provide, you know, anybody to see the agenda, to know that if there was an executive session, you'll see it referred to in the minutes, and if it's in the minutes, it has to be on the agenda kind of thing. So, that way we don't have any issues, but you don't need to actually vote to make that change.
Okay, so, then Patty, if, if council agrees, if, if you don't hear from me, or Mark, or Karen, or, or anybody, we should use, probably get Mark's approval before we would have an executive session, then there's nothing listed on the, and then if there is, then, like I said, executive session, I would put executive session needed, or executive session tonight, and then Mark will give you the reason for it. But this is confusing, and it's not Patty's fault, I don't know how this percolated into our, maybe it was this way when I was on, I don't remember, but.
It was the prior council that had me, but it doesn't really matter.
But we'll just take it off. Is, is everybody okay with that? Because it, don't you think it's confusing the way we do it now? Rip, rap, additional items for discussion, it is five minutes till nine, I'd like to end there by nine, Clarence, if we're out of here at 9:05, Clarence is going to chew me out.
He's going to buy everybody's stuff.
Is there anything else?
No.
Let's go around the table. Clarence, any final thoughts, final discussion?
Nothing.
Tom?
No.
I have nothing. Karen? Okay, then at 8:56, according to my watch, Patty, I'll ask for a motion that we adjourn.
Make that a motion.
Ron and Terry, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.